Good evening. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator for Southampton. And this is a Town Moderator Special Town Meeting Article Information Session. Now, the concept is to go through every article that will be on the Special Town Meeting, January the 20th, Tuesday, 7:00 at the William E. Norris School on Palmeri Middle Drive. And because it's an information session, there will be no debate, there will be no votes, no straw votes. The concept is to ask questions, to find out information, and we learn too. Maybe our motion needs to be tweaked a bit from what we might have planned, we being the town in general. So, we will start at 6:00, at 6:00, and we will end at or before 6:45. Article 1. I will read them, and then I will ask different people to give an explanation. Article 1. Transfer fiscal '14 free cash fiscal '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,376 to supplement the winter expenses account, and some shall be taken from FY '14 free cash, or take any action relevant. We can leave that out. Vicki, would you like to give us an explanation on Article 1?
Sure. My name is Vicki Morrow. I'm the town accountant. I also live in Southampton. Basically, in order to, um, a deficit spend for a snow and ice account, we needed to be able to have the budget be equal to, I shouldn't say equal to, sorry, $1 more than we budgeted the prior year. And we didn't do that for FY '15, so this $5376 will bring us up to that level. Otherwise, we wouldn't, by the Department of Revenue's standards, we wouldn't be able to deficit spend if that needed to be done this year.
Thank you. Any questions on Article 1? There will be, at the town meeting, there will be motions that will fall under the umbrella of each particular article. So, motions are generally, planned motions are generally worded a little bit differently, but the concept is they have to stay in the four corners of the article. Article 2. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $13,534 to supplement the winter wages account, and some shall be taken from FY '14 free cash.
This is relation to the Article 1. Article 1 is for the expenses, which is sand and salt. The next account is for the wages, which is to pay the highway workers for their efforts in plowing and sanding and salting our streets. Again, in order to be able to deficit spend for FY '15, we need to bring the levels of the budget up to at least $1 more than we budgeted last year. And this $13,534 will bring us into that good standing.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll go to Article 3. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,029 to supplement the insurance general account, and some shall be taken from the FY '14 free cash.
Our general insurance account was not budgeted in completion for FY '15, which also included, in FY '15, the insurance rates did rise. So, this $5,029 will cover the deficit that's currently in that account due to those two circumstances. And by law, we can't have a deficit on our books.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, we'll go to Article 4. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $20,708 to supplement the unemployment compensation account. Said sums shall be taken from FY '14 free cash.
The unemployment account was budgeted for $8,000 based on prior year history. And currently, we have a few cases that were not settled prior to the budget year, but they were settled over the summer. And those are costing the town quite a bit of money due to the, one of them being a larger salary. We happened to lose that unemployment case, and now we have to pay for that person to collect.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, Article 5. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $12,000 to the elementary school account for a water heater purchase. Said sums shall be taken from FY '14 free cash. Thank you. Actually, Jacqui? Jaclyn Sears, our select woman.
We are currently under net school spending, $5,309, five million, pardon me, $309,400, $41,000 to approximately $176,109,000. This transfer will begin to close the gap.
Thank you. Vicki, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think she did pretty well.
Any questions?
Seeing none, we'll go to Article 6. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 to the public safety feasibility account to fund the purchase of six-tenths acre of land, the Bray property, for the purpose of an adjacent area to install a septic system for the public safety complex, which abuts the area currently owned by the town and occupied by the town hall, Larabee building, and the fire station. Such funds shall be taken from FY '14 free cash.
Yeah, bring it up. Thanks, Charlie. This is Charlie Kanicki, who is on the, head of the safety complex.
Okay. We've been working on a public safety complex in town for the last three to four years, trying to get something established. When we did the soil work originally around the property in town, we came up with nothing suitable for a septic system. However, the abutting property here did pass per. We can take and design a septic system for the complex there. Not only that, even if we didn't do the complex, the present fire station septic system is in failure also. So, it still provides us with the means to take and correct the existing problem. Mr. Bray has a sale agreement with the town to sell his property there. It's six tenths of an acre, and that's about it in a nutshell. If we don't purchase this land, that project is not going to go forward. Questions?
We have a little bit more time. You want to give a little bit more background, perhaps, now?
Into...
The feasibility, or why we're buying the property, in a little bit more detail?
Well, if you notice, the town's fire and police stations are in horrible shape. We need to upgrade them as soon as possible. This is the process we're checking to do it. We're trying to keep everything in the center of town, so that the municipal government is in the center of town, so that when people need services and stuff, they got one shot stopping, if they can get stuff done. We don't want to end up with the fire station on one street, the police station on another street, the town hall on another street. So, this is a great way of consolidating everything. In May, and I'm not going to say it's going to, but it may actually, by consolidating, save a little money also down the road, because we can have maintenance and everything else in one area. The septic system in and of itself is basically because we have all kinds of clay lenses in this area. The septic system for this building is actually in the front of the building, towards Maple Street. That was the only area we could find that would pass when this was being constructed. But it is not large enough an area to support adding on another complex. So, the ideal solution is to find another land. This is the land that became the most suitable.
How's the price established? Did you have, like, an independent...
Well, yeah. We hired an appraiser to do an evaluation. He appraised it at $30,000 as the land. Mr. Bray, being the gentleman he is, said, "That's fine. I know the town needs this." And that's where we went. This has been a very, even though towns take land, this has been an extremely friendly taking. Even the tree harvesting you see going on right now is for Mr. Bray's benefit to clear his land that we're not buying, as well as part of what we're buying. And it's just being done cooperatively to get things resolved.
How far is that system away from the complex?
If, and the complex hasn't been established yet...
Plan, where is the plan to be?
But the plan for the complex is in here. You know that trailer that's out there?
It's a white trailer?
Yeah, yeah. So, figure the trailer is sort of dead center of the complex. Then, this is going to be up that hill. You know, if you look up the hill, you'll see white pipes. Those were the test pits we dug to determine the soil. That'll be where the septic system is in. So, the septic system will be a duly distance away from there.
Can I answer your question?
I think so. So, there's no right of way to choose to give the public complex to that property that you have to deal with in order to get your septic line to that location?
No, because of the fact that we own this.
Well, it's already owned by the town?
It's already owned by the town. The town owns everything this way.
Oh, okay.
And when I switch to the next article, I'm going to give you a war story on that. But, the reality of it is, we own it all the way up to this property line. It'll be a pump system. It'll probably be pressure dosing, but I'm not an engineer, but that's probably what we're going to end up with. It doesn't interfere with any other property. Is there anything? There's nothing out there. Mrs. Bray keeps a couple cows out there. It's about it.
Any other questions? Everybody good? Okay, thank you.
I'll switch to the other.
We'll go to Article 7. Stay around, Charlie.
I will too.
Okay. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $4,000 to the public safety feasibility account to cover legal costs related to the purchase of the Bray property. Said funds shall be taken from FY '14 free cash. Charlie?
Come on up here. You really want to see this. We first started this project on public safety complexes. The last thing we thought we were going to do was deed researches. What we occurred to us was, the town has 12 different distinct properties in this one area, plus, you're standing in the county road right now. So, we had to stand in the county road, which was a process we've done in the last year. And now, what we're trying to do is take all these deeds and consolidate them into one master plan. So, we're going to end up with one deed, and we've already surveyed this out, already recorded it, so it'll be one plan on record. And because we're in the process of buying Mr. Bray's property, that $4,000 also includes the legal fee to close on that property. So, we're going to end up with one deed, one plan for the whole area, so that when somebody beyond me decides to do something out here, they'll be able to look at a piece of paper and say, "Yeah, this is actually the town's property."
Gotcha.
Okay?
Okay.
Don't ask me why we walked into this, but we walked into it.
And we thank you for straightening it out.
If it ain't done yet, we still need your vote, so we can move it. But, it's to the point now where everybody agrees on property lines, and they've been marked, it's been surveyed. So, the town is much better off in the future with this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you for the simple assignment.
Only you can handle it.
Come on.
Article 8. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $28 to Larabee renovation. Said sums shall be taken from FY '14 free cash.
This account was negative, is a capital account, the renovations to do this particular building. And it's been there since before I got here. And I, you know, in learning all the new pieces and all the bigger pieces to what I had to when I came in here, I never really did much with it. And so, now we definitely should make the account whole and not have a deficit.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to Article 9. Fran?
Just before we go on to Article 9, I'm assuming that all eight are coming up, the way the decision was made to allocate the free cash going forward, this doesn't exceed the 25, this is coming out in general category, the first eight items?
The new policy for...
The new policy on free cash?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Because the way I calculate it, it goes back to about $91,000 for those eight items. And we had about 100, if I get it right, $127,000 available.
Yeah, because after everything on this warrant gets taken out of free cash, along with the allocation pieces, which we're going to talk about next, there was like 20, 30, $27,000, $30,000 left, I believe.
Yeah.
But I understand.
Can I just make a suggestion, that maybe if everybody in the town doesn't know about the new policy on how free cash is going to be allocated going forward, so that they know where the money is coming from and going to, it might be a good opportunity at next week's meeting on the 20th to explain that to people.
Needs to be under the, an article. That is no longer going to be a bylaw, a proposed bylaw. That's been taken off. So, the policy is the Select Board policy, and the question answers, it may come out.
Okay.
Okay. But, the concept in a town meeting is that whatever is said needs to be said under the umbrella of the motion for that article. Even though it's fascinating history and news, we're talking about the four corners of that article of the motion. So, that's what the town moderator is needed for, to ensure everyone stays within those four corners. Article 9. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $178,865 to capital stabilization. Said sums shall be taken from FY '14 free cash. And this requires a two-thirds vote. My policy is to ask for those approving the motion. Hearing no nays, it therefore passes by two-thirds. If there's one person that says nay, then we bring in the counters, and so that we can record for Boston the exact number, meeting that requirement of a two-thirds vote. Jacqui?
Capital stabilization, 35% of free cash transferred inconsistency with free policy adopted by the board of select.
Free cash policy?
Yes.
Seven. Good way to explain that. Any questions on Article 9? Seeing none, we'll go to Article 10. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $153,312 to operating stabilization. Said sums shall be taken from FY '14 free cash. And that also requires a two-thirds vote. Jaclyn?
Operating stabilization, 30% of free cash transferred inconsistency with free policy adopted by the board of select.
Vicki, do you want to add anything else?
The town administrator and I, Heather, sat down to discuss what we should do with our free cash, as our reserves have been depleted over the past several years. And we looked at other towns and came up with some percentages of how we thought that it should be broken out. Obviously, we put money into the stabilization funds, the capital for capital purchases, for new fire equipment, for police cars, for highway trucks, those types of things. And then, into the operating stabilization to account for any types of emergencies, for instance, like the $30,000 for the Bray property. We could, you know, do something like that. And then, the last piece, which they'll get to in a minute, is our other post-employment benefits, to set money aside for when people retire. The state is requiring us, under GASP 34, in compliance, in order to do that, we have to be putting money, a significant amount of money aside each year. It can't be $1,000, $200, in order to build up that kitty, so that we don't get stuck when a whole bunch of people retired at the end of the year. And it being a policy by the Select Board allows the Select Board to change those percentages if they choose, if we feel we need to put more money into capital, because we want to build the infrastructure a little bit more, you know, that type of situation. So, that's why I think it was adopted that way.
Great. Thank you. Comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll go to Article 11. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $51,104 to OPEB. Said sums shall be taken from FY '14 free cash. Jacqui?
Okay. As Vicki alluded to, other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB, 10% of free cash transferred inconsistency with free policy adopted by the board of select.
Thank you. Vicki?
One of the other reasons why you wanted to make this a particular policy is that at that point, when we have funded that OPEB liability to its limit, we can take that money out of that account, that 10%, and change the policy, and put it back into capital, or put it back into something else, once we've reached the comfortable limit of what's in that particular account, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments, questions? Seeing none. Article 12. Transfer FY '14 free cash FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $75,000 to supplement the Norris School account. Said sums shall be taken from vocational tuition. Jacqui?
We are currently under net school spending, $5,309,41 by approximately $176,109. This will transfer, this transfer will begin to close the gap.
Thank you. Vicki?
Basically, what we're trying to do here is transfer already an appropriated budget line from the vocational tuition to the Norris Elementary School. Both of those lines combined play into our net school spending. And so, because we didn't have as many students go to the vocational schools we originally budgeted, we do have some money, a little bit left over in that particular budget line item. And in order to close that gap, we're moving some money over to the school. We're just doing a budget transfer. We're not re-appropriating any funds at all whatsoever. But, we need a vote by the town before the May 30th date, before I can legally do it with the Finance Committee, and the Select Board has to go to town meeting, so.
Yes. If we remain under net school spending, the negative aspect to the town is what?
They haven't given us those figures yet, the Department of Education, but there is a fine, and then penalties and interest. I can tell you that most recently, the city of Taunton was assessed at $700,000. I mean, granted, it's a city, but they have a $700,000 deficit that they have to pay back with penalties and interest and stuff, because they didn't meet net school spending. So, it's better off to put this money in there now, and in the long run, it, you know, it won't cost us any more money.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Speaking of votes, a town meeting, a lot different from a town election. A town election, we can have absentee ballots. We know we're going to be away for whatever reason. We can obtain a ballot, we can vote ahead of time. For town meeting, we need to be present for many reasons. But, one that comes to mind is that article could be amended. And that person who voted allegedly with the absentee concept may not like that amendment, or that amendment may change the dollar amount. So, for several reasons, but that's a quick one, one needs to be present at a town meeting. That's the legislative body of our government. Article 13. Transfer of funds, building inspector's salary FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,500 to supplement the building inspection expense account, and some shall be taken from building inspector's salary. Vicki?
Basically, our, our building inspector retired at the end of June. We did not hire a new one until November. So, there was some savings in that building inspector's salary line. But, in the meantime, we had to pay the substitute building inspector, and we need to pay a building commissioner to oversee the current building inspector until he gets all of his licenses. Those two individuals need to be paid out of the expense account because they are vendors. They would receive a 1099 for those funds. They're not necessarily on our payroll, and we couldn't pay them out of the salary line. So, we're moving the money from the salary line to the expense line to cover the cost of paying those particular individuals. We're just transferring money from one line to another.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll go to Article 14. Transfer of funds, building inspector's salary FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,664 to supplement the reserve account, and some shall be taken from building inspector's salary. Vicki?
Originally, when we had to pay those two individuals, the building inspector went to the Finance Committee to take the money from the reserve account to cover those deficits. As I said before, we aren't allowed to deficit spend. And we're just replenishing that reserve account, so that at the end of the year, if someone has an emergency and they, there's something above and beyond their control, and there's not a lot of money left in their budget, there will be money in that reserve account for the Finance Committee to allocate to those particular people that will need those funds. If they are not needed, which would be great, it falls into free cash at the end of the year.
Thank you. Thank you, Vicki. Any comments, questions? Article 15. Transfer Water Enterprise Fund FY '15. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,038 to pay prior bills from FY '14 to Gary Swanson P.E. Said sums shall be taken from the Water Enterprise retained earnings. Vicki, would you speak?
I can do that.
And that, excuse me, that requires a nine-tenths vote, because it's a, well, you can explain.
The water retained earnings is like their particular free cash, because it's an enterprise fund. They are, they project their revenues, and they project their expenses, and they're kind of in their own little entity. And so, if there's overages or shortages, it needs to be covered with fees collected from the Water Enterprise Fund. But, they get free cash certified at the end of each fiscal year, as the general fund does from the town, in order to take money to pay prior year bills. Those funds need to be certified first. Those funds were not certified at the time in October, when this bill came to our attention, that it needed to be paid. And those get certified at the same time as our regular free cash. I submit all that at the same time. So, we're just trying to get this bill paid. That was from June of 2014. Anything sent to my office after a certain date is considered a prior year bill and needs to go to town meeting. I don't have any more time to accrue those funds for that same year.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? We are, this will take longer, I imagine, on the 20th of January.
Yeah, you'll notice I'll have my stack of papers, that I always bring with me.
Any, any questions on any of the articles that we did? Any ques, yes?
I'm just curious, what was the free cash for the Water Enterprise certified at?
$215,000 and $215,605.
$215,000, right.
And that money rolls into...
That money will roll into next year, once I take all the revenues and expenses and match them all up, and then...
For the enterprise?
Yep. It works the same way. But, you can only spend it on water stuff.
I understand.
Yeah, so.
I have 15 minutes left for me to talk. Oh, good. We have more questions?
So, all this, all this, this week, or 15 stuff that we're taking from, does that make it a sum of $0.00 now, or is that something that...
There will be, I think approximately, I think I said 27 to 30. I didn't, I had it on my other papers upstairs, left in that free cash balance, after, after everything on this is said and done. So, minus the water, because the water is its own, there's $215,605. If you take this away, you still have $212,000 left for them to allocate, which only can be, any of those funds can only be allocated up till June 30th at a town meeting.
Any other general questions on town meetings? Oh, I won't take 15 minutes to talk. But, I will share what's often asked, especially already before a meeting. Our bylaw states that 25 voters need to be present for a town meeting, including the town moderator and the town clerk. The Select Board, our town accountant, our treasurer-collector, a legal counsel are not required by law to be there. It's essentially the legislative body. We're pleased that they're there, because they participate, they answer lots of questions, and they set up... And they sit up front, um, by, by, uh, tradition. And they could sit in the audience as in many towns. Uh, in fact, in many towns, all you'll see is a town moderator and a town accountant, and everybody is sitting, uh, in the audience. So we carry policy, we carry bylaws, we carry tradition, and every now and then, something gets tweaked. And we're very careful about doing that. We like to live with policy. And one new policy that the town clerk and the town moderator established last year was to have anybody who wants to present any materials to be left on the table at the start of a town meeting, pro or con, from town hall or not, anonymously or not, needs to be in the town clerk's office by noon, uh, the day before the town meeting. That gives the town moderator the opportunity to look at something so there's no surprises. Anything can happen outside, uh, the meeting, but the meeting is essentially under the jurisdiction of the town moderator. And the, there's so many facets of, of town, uh, meeting, and, and one, before I answer Charlie's question, is that the town moderator's duty is to meet with every author of an article and ensure that it's written as well as it can be for passage, for positive voting. Whether the town moderator agrees with it or not, town moderator is also available to defeat an article. Uh, town moderator is elected by the people. Town moderator is, is meant to be, be fair, not to be pro or con. Charlie?
Those charts?
Yes.
I don't need to bring those to the town clerk...
No.
To...
No. Just, 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 just handouts if there would be...
But you should stand that up so someone's going to question.
And we, we usually take a look right before a meeting just to make sure. Every now and then, we get surprised, somebody wants to give a twenty-minute video. It's not going to happen.
Well, that's it, no more.
Yeah. Um, that happened once, and, and halfway into twenty-minute film, I said, "That's enough." Everybody was falling asleep, it was a very hot day. So I learned my lesson. So we try to do three, five minutes. Uh, somebody has a ten-minute presentation, pro or con, wants to go beyond the five minutes. Uh, the proper thing to do would, would, would take a vote with the, uh, the audience, uh, the meeting, and, and see whether we proceed or not. But the concept is, if, believe, if you can't present your message in five minutes, then you're not going to be able to, to, to do better with, with, with more. So it's a, it's a, it's been going on for a couple hundred years, town meeting. In fact, the British, uh, were known to say, "Oh, those colonists and their darn..." Probably said another word, "town meetings." And, uh, and it works. Uh, the bigger the town, uh, you have a mayor, you have a different type of a town government. But it gives, it gives everyone an opportunity to sit and be heard. And pers, my belief is that we only meet a couple times a year. So if you have something to say and it's within the four corners of the article, then please say it. The concept is not to repeat. What does that mean? Well, if we're voting to paint the sign yellow and somebody's already said that, then the next person need not get up and say, "I want to paint the sign yellow" because it's, it's already been said. So it isn't how many times we say what we say. It's different concepts, and the idea is for everyone, uh, to, to consider and to vote. And I chose this because other towns do this, and I believe it's fair. It gets the word out, gets us thinking about the articles rather than showing up, registering, and getting a stapled, uh, couple sheets of paper, and what does that mean? So it also gives, uh, uh, select woman Jackie Sears and Vicki Merrill, the town accountant, and Heather, who can't be here today, the town administrator, gives her an opportunity to perhaps reword the motion under that article and still be within the four corners to, quote, explain it better, not to allude to a misconception that was not intended. So this has been fun. Thank you for coming. Uh, any other questions? Uh, I, I thank Vicki, and I, I thank Jackie, and thank you, Charlie, and certainly, uh, East Hampton cable Paul Fish for, for allowing this to be live so everybody can sit at home and be warm and not be out there in a cold. So we'll see everyone on the twentieth of January, seven o'clock, William E. Norris School, and looking forward to it. Thank you very much.